All right, folks, Bonnie will be here shortly. And let's begin the Brownlboro Planning Commission meeting of September 30th. Six minutes past six. Let's get the minutes of last meeting out of the way, August 4th. Is there motion?
Motion to approve the minutes for August 4, 2025.
Thank you, Gary.
I'll second.
Thank you, Lindsay. Any comments, questions?
Discussion.
Concerns themselves?
Very.
No? Okay. All those in favor, please. Well, we don't have to do it with the Zoom thing anymore, but... All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? No? Okay. Announcements, are there any announcements? Sue looks like you have. No?
I don't have any announcements.
You're taking a breath.
I was trying to think because it's been a day. I haven't really had much time to think.
Okay. Well, I'll give a quasi-announcement. I was looking at some of the past Design Review Committee minutes. They do the historic resource overlay. They do review and see applications for that and give... Anyway, and I saw that they are planning soon to recommend to the Select Board for the Historic Preservation Committee formation, which is an element of Certified Local Government. And back like over a year and a quarter ago, we made Certified Local Government, at least the Planning Commission, to the... We made recommendations that would be delivered to the Select Board at some point. So I just wanted to remind everyone of that. And it seems like, because now the DRC is on board with making recommendations that I don't know how closely they align with ours, but it'd be good to coordinate. So look for that. Is there... Steve, is there any schedule for making their recommendation to the Select Board or getting on an agenda?
Not an explicit schedule, but it's because they've got their ordinance language proposal finished, so I think whenever the Select Board has it in it.
Okay.
Which I'm sure we'll do along the ways of it. Yeah, whenever we get them on their agenda, I'm sure we'll be able to get that in front of them. But we don't have to like an immediate meeting.
Right, okay. What do you think about the... If our recommendation from like a year and a quarter ago was slightly different than theirs, will they both be brought to the Select Board at the same time? Or...
It's different, so...
Yeah, I thought there was like added provisions that were like optional. And we selected some and not others. Anyway, so just flagging that.
It was so confusing. That's what I remember.
Yeah.
I didn't remember like options, actually, because in order to establish this Certified Local Government, it's pretty...
Well, there was one thing about like, will the Historic Preservation Committee... This is hearing way more than an announcement, but that's fine, I guess. Will the Historic Preservation Committee be able to... Or like recommend local historic districts or design districts? And remember when we were reviewing those with overlay districts? I think we kind of settled on, well, overlay district has like all the advantages without the restrictions of those previous two. So we didn't want the Design Review Committee to even be able to consider to have the power of... Yeah, anyway.
Yeah.
March.
Yeah. Yeah, bring you that.
Okay. Great, so we're all here, so let's just go right to the work plan. Planning Commission work plan for the upcoming future, say a year. We have some ongoing projects, as you all see in the memo that staff prepared and as you know about. And then there's also some ideas that were put forward by a few of us. So I'll pass it over to staff because they designed some exercise for us to help decide and rank these.
Thanks. So yeah, I know at the last meeting, I can maybe if you have questions about that, for those of you that weren't here, we were going to do this exercise on Zoom, on the whiteboard, and the four commission members, they didn't take it up just because it wasn't a full committee commission and felt that it would be a better activity to do in person. It was a bit confusing on the whiteboard. So thank you all for being here. So in July, we kind of talked about what was on the docket for the Planning Commission, what might be of interest to Planning Commissioners. And it was agreed that it should be a little bit more of a thought-out kind of process. And so what we asked you to do is to submit any proposed projects that you think it might be valuable for the Planning Commission to spend some time on. And then we would do a ranking activity. So we'll explain that, what that is. Staff was asked to let you know what our capability was to take on new projects. And it's very live. The town plan is very big. I set out grants that we're working on. We're trying to get an online permitting system up. So you know, what we talk about these projects are ones that staff can weigh in on and give some guidance to, but we cannot be driving the work to get it someplace. So if it's something that gets ranked at this time, we're really going to need Planning Commissioners to step up and volunteer to kind of help these. But again, we'll be available to give some input. So as a background, I mean, some of the projects that we have going on is, which we weren't planning on having ranked. I don't know if that was the plan there. But we have Town Plan 2026, which is the ultimate priority because that's got a deadline of May for adoption. And so there's still a fair amount of work to be done there. The downtown bike parking, which has kind of been an ongoing project that Tom was really spearheading.
Still am.
Still am, yeah.
The summer's just so busy. I can't believe how fast the months fly by. But any month now, I plan to have it on an agenda with recommendations.
Yeah. And so this would be recommendations for where to put some additional... Hopefully to fund additional bike racks and where to put them downtown. The industrial zoning district boundaries, which we had begun that conversation. And I think we had resolution on two kind of zoning boundary district changes. I've had some conversation with one of the property owners, who actually, many of you may recall, he participated in a Planning Commission meeting trying to talk about Cotton Mill. This was for the ECC. And where they were trying to do some housing with it, and that was the zoning barrier. So we had agreed to look at all the industrial zoning areas. That project is kind of off for now due to costs. So the Planning Commission may or may not feel any sense of urgency with that. But I feel like that is going to be addressed in the land use chapter of the town plan. And then we'll move that forward after the town plan is adopted. And then we had some zoning amendments that have just kind of been sitting there. We were trying to get a couple of zoning amendments together before trying to bring those to the Select Board just because that is, that takes some time as well, the hearing process. It's an expense. We could choose to move them forward. They have to deal with parking minimums. We were getting rid of minimums, changing them to maximums. Also bike park rack, bike rack requirements that we had worked on. And then there is also the housing amendments that we did as... September 1, what's the name? I can't think of the name.
Interim.
Interim zoning. We've got two years on that. But you know, if we could make them permanent as well. So those are kind of the four current projects that are kind of in some state. The proposed projects, I gave you some background. Hopefully you had a chance to read. I don't know, Tom, would you prefer members speak to them?
Maybe if you... There's an idea. If you explain the exercise, then that will slightly help people shake their questions.
Okay. So it's going to be kind of a two-step, three-step process. We're gonna, we've got some sheets up. We have put all the proposed projects on there. And we're going to ask you, in its first step, to kind of sort them by what do you think are immediate priority projects that are immediate in nature? That you think that they should be done, you know, at the same time as we're doing the town plan or before, you know, that we really have something that we need to address. It's really critical. And then the next... The next category is kind of the moderate priority projects. So these are ones that are, you know, they're priority, but recognize that they should be done when the town plan has been adopted. And then the other one is just, how do we frame it? Non-priority projects, like for the moment, yeah, we can kind of... They're good projects, but we're going to set aside it. You know, there's not enough. So first step is, we will, you'll each have sticky notes and you can put them in one of those buckets for each of the 10 projects.
Is there a fourth category of just...
There's three categories.
Okay.
Yeah. And I put the sheets out and be able to see.
You see what I'm asking, right? If someone feels like, no, the commission should not work on this, ever. I'm not saying I feel that way about something. Because I'll bring options.
Because essentially, the ones that fall into the not a priority are just going to kind of be hanging out there.
Pushed off, yeah.
Yes, John.
So when you talk about the priority, it's the urgency to do, not the frequent of doing it that we're ranking?
It's the urgency.
Some of the projects may take a while, but they're urgent. We need to still put them in the urgent.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So those more like that are realistic, tangible, that are obtainable at this time? Or is this something, the ones you're mentioning, priority? That this is something that's going to be tackled? Like, you know, just trying to get the, you know...
Well, that kind of gets at John's question. So it's an important, you know, if it's ranking highest, it's going to be, this is kind of a priority project.
Right.
It could take two months. It could take 12 months. But we're saying that it should be going on now, while the town plan is going on.
One other question. For the two that I suggested, I honestly don't have full knowledge of what the status is. So before I would even vote on my own suggestions, I'd like to, some feedback from you guys as content experts to say, okay, well, we're doing this, this, and this on it now.
Yep.
And I might change my priority basis.
Yeah, definitely. I had intended, kind of switched around. I can go through the projects and then explain the activity, but we flipped it, and that's fine. I think it is good. I want to get all the projects up there. That way the questions can be asked. People will know what they're, how they're ranking them. And then after that step, the top two, so the immediate and the moderate priority projects, we're going to have put into, you know, kind of what is your capacity to take this on? Because again, staff can't drive these projects, so we can assist you. But see if that filters things out. Do you feel differently about them if you do or do not have time to do it? And then, yeah, then... The last step would be just kind of identifying where there's leads, who might be able to help with the project where there's no leads. Just to see where everything falls out.
If we could go back to current projects for a minute or two. I have questions about the industrial district boundary changes. And specifically relating to the cotton mill, because this is the first that I'm hearing of it. What exactly is the holdup in making changes to that? Because as I've said before, live workspace is a very high priority for me. And I think is something that this town desperately needs. So any proposal of adding housing to the cotton mill area seems on the surface of it to be a very good idea. So I don't understand why that doesn't seem to have happened already.
So it was originally, our industrial zoning districts were really designed for kind of the heavy impact industrial uses. And that property, which, you know, was kind of, was put into that zoning district. And we do not allow housing in that zoning district. Because years ago, when we were doing the town plan, there were some larger industries that, you know, would have truck traffic and things. And we had some issues with noise and traffic and that kind of thing. So yeah, when we had the request from BDCC and started looking at it, we did not want it to be spot zoning, where we're just changing the zoning for the benefit of the landowner.
Right.
And so we were looking more widely at it, at all of our industrial zoning districts. We had looked at the area north of the roundabout, exit three, because the east side of that road is all industrial zoning districts. So book press, adway. And there were areas that staff, like we've had issues with. So, you know, we were looking at making a boundary adjustment there. We looked a little bit in the exit one, kind of industrial park area. And then the, where Cotton Mill Hill is and kind of that area, there's a contractor's yard there. Kind of that, that whole intersection of South Main and Fairground.
Yeah, or just where I live, so.
Okay. And looking at that area and trying to figure out exactly what's the best way to handle it. We all agree that Cotton Mill Hill is not like that other industrials in the district. And there's a lot of non-conformities because it's a lot of artists and small commercial that's in that building. So yeah, so that was kind of...
Yeah.
We just haven't resolved that and been able to talk to the neighbors and figure out where the boundaries should be are the best way to do it.
You know, as a person who is originally from New York City, I am well-used to living cheap by job with heavy industrial sites. And that's not even something that I even think of as a problem. Yes, it's going to be noisy, but the people who are going to move there are going to understand that they're going to need to put up with a little bit of noise. So, you know, and, you know, I do know the properties north of exit three. You know, I know that's all industrial zone. But I also know that there's a whole lot of vacant land up there that's just not being used, that could be used. So I was just a little curious as to why there seemed to be some hesitancy there.
I wouldn't say it's hesitancy. I mean, I think the biggest hesitancy would be, we don't want it to be spot zoning.
Right.
And, you know, it's kind of, it's a change. We haven't really done public outreach on that.
I just don't see that, I mean, you can call it spot zoning, but I don't see it as something that necessarily just benefits an individual landlord. Yes, in that case, it would happen to benefit an individual landlord. But the benefit it would provide to the town would justify it, in my opinion. The other thing I wanted to ask about is the bike rack requirement. I need my memory refreshed on this. And how this relates to the plans for providing public bicycle parking? If I'm correct, this separate section is for private landowners?
So the bike parking that is the other project on there is narrowly focused on the downtown.
Right.
Because in, with regular parking, we don't allow private property owners to create new service parking.
Right.
And so when Brownlboro Coalition for Active Transportation came to us with these standards, we agreed, let's have some standards for the commercial developments that are outside of downtown. But let's work on, maybe the town should be providing bike racks.
Right. But under the separate section, under zoning amendments, what is that specifically for?
It has to do with making commercial development. If you're going through cycle and review, you're going to have to provide bike parking. What are the types of racks? Because some are better than others, right? What's the location? We had a lot of conversation, talking about short-term, long-term. But basically, this was short-term, kind of where it's located on the lot and what.
And what are the additional land use regulations that are needed in order for those projects to move forward?
We just need to have public hearings. So it's Planning Commission public hearings, Select Board public hearings. Tom?
Yeah, okay.
Sue, at one point, we had talked about looking at other areas that would be zoned industrial. I think Lindsay wrote it up. So the issue with Cotton Mill is specifically rezoning Cotton Mill, correct? Not necessarily a broader issue of whatever industrial zones.
No, it's broader to looking at all of our, yeah. We were looking at the borders of all of them.
Okay, I got confused when I heard the discussion.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So should we, looking through the list of non-proposed projects, keeping in mind the context of the current, you know, projects and things, should we see if commissioners have questions or need clarity about any of that before we begin the first step of the exercise? Does that sound, I mean, so the way we're doing this, are we each getting a piece of paper? Or are there like...
Nope, we're going to get you to get up and walk around and read of all the wires that are on the floor.
And then...
And we have, we have stinkies.
You don't have a hat or...
So then each, each project, does it have the whole paragraph? Or just the quick little...
It's a number, and I correspond.
Oh, a number. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We're going to ask you that.
Okay.
Part of the exercise.
No, not that.
But I can help you. I've got them written down under the room.
Suppose we can also just start and then people can ask questions?
Yeah, that's what happens.
They need clarity.
You want to just ask questions about...
Ask as we do.
Ask as we do.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I think John, well, John was asking for some information about projects that he submitted because it could affect the way he votes.
Yeah, I don't know, maybe everybody else understands the suggestions they made completely and who needed, but when I made the suggestion that we need to activate more of downtown, I didn't really know all of the activities that were currently ongoing because I know there's been a lot of discussion, for example. And what of that discussion has turned into action, I'm unclear on. So I'd like that before I voted on it. Does that make sense, Sue?
Yeah, I mean, yes. So John, if you don't mind, I mean, you had submitted one, investigated the different types of tools that the town could use to activate more of the vacant property, particularly in downtown. So the town does have a vacant building ordinance, but I would say it largely won't apply to a lot of the block buildings in the downtown. It really was, the impetus for that was to have a higher level of property maintenance while a building is vacant and to prevent the really long-term problematic properties like Sportsman or Friendly's or there's a residential house on High Street where it is long-term vacancy. We tried to push, you know, to, for them to think about selling it because somebody else might be able to activate it quicker. So there are provisions in the vacant building ordinance that, you know, don't work great for a situation like the Home Depot or Sam's because there's lots of other, you know, Home Depot's a shopping plaza. Sam's is a big block building where there is a fair amount of use in both of those.
Actually, isn't it more like three buildings involved in that? That Sam's was occupying?
Yeah, at least two.
At least two, yeah.
So as I understand what you said, then the ordinances we have in place are really designed for a completely empty building, where I was asking specifically about activating partially occupied buildings. And we don't have, it sounds like, anything on the books for that.
No. I mean, you know, part of it, yeah, at this point is letting the commercial cycle.
There was a discussion of the vacant ordinance at one of the Select Board meetings this past summer. And I do not remember exactly what the status of that was. I can only say that my objection to it was that it wasn't stringent enough, that the penalties actually needed to be harsher in order to force these buildings into use. However, the best way to find out information on that would be the Select Board.
Yeah, I don't mean to be rude, but I would bet you that we've had plenty of conversations, this being Vermont, on, you know, what are we going to do with, to activate the vacant buildings? But if there's nothing going on, I'm going to take it it's nothing going on. Again, I don't mean any rudeness to you.
No, no. No, so I mean, in terms of everything else, no. I mean, there is a tax stabilization program, but it's really meant for, you know, larger industrial, I think, than smaller commercial. I think, you know, there's a small business...
And that's more proactive than reactive, correct? In other words, somebody has to reach out to you.
Correct.
Got it.
Correct, yeah. I mean, although the different people know the tool. And then there is a small business loan through the town. And, you know, restaurants have used that. But again, I think it's fairly proactive. I mean, the information's out there, but it's maybe not from the shooter.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
So what type of plan, I guess, they're incentivizing along with, you know, letting them know, they just sit there, we're going after whoever? Is there any incentivization for them to move on, you know, filling in those empty vacant buildings?
I think Sue was...
Well, if you don't want to...
The ones, the option sheets.
I mean, it's like downtown already, there's a few, like there's no...
Well, I think that's kind of what jumps.
Yeah, like Martin's is holding, you have, you know, there's a couple places already, so...
Yes, but that's why we have to do our ranking activity. Then we can get into the deeper discussion.
Well, yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to ask a question of Lindsay's. It's the last one on the list. Other specialized residential structures, land use amendments. Do you have an example in mind or did you notice some examples where there is...
The one for single residency occupancy being not allowed in some districts where I think that there are other activities that are as high intensity or more high intensity. Yeah. So I was specifically thinking of that. And then when I started to look closer, I just thought that there were probably some others where it's probably, maybe wasn't really thought of all that. Like, it might have just been missed, you know, like, oh, these activities are really similar. Why are we not allowing them in that place? But I was specifically thinking of the single residency occupancy. Or as I would like to recall it, co-living.
And that's, that's not a specific type of land use spelled out? That's another specialized residential?
Yeah, I think that it all falls there, like in that category. There's like a few different types of things that fall under that category.
Okay.
And so that's why I sort of broadened it to like, we should just look and check for like bias and consistency across the board.
Has staff looked at any, anything in that category yet?
Nope.
Okay. But you've noticed at least that and a few other leads, okay.
Tom, is your place SRO?
Did what?
You rent out rooms to people. Is that considered an SRO?
No, no, that's more like an apartment style, like block building.
So I live next to Holton Homes. I know that's SRO.
Yeah.
So that's SRO, but renting out apartments isn't SRO?
Yeah.
That's not covered by any code or anything like that?
That's why you have a rooming house that's SRO.
Don't get me in trouble here, John, but...
I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to understand.
So our code actually makes distinctions between things like boarding house, single residency occupancy, and there are other...
Sorry, SRO is not boarding house.
And it's not the same. And so that's another thing that I think that, like, we should just look at those definitions and see if they're functionally the same and make sure that like, well, if you're allowing a rooming house in one area is not an SRO, why?
No, I got it.
That sort of thing.
Because we have a lot of rooming houses, but...
So like the same as shared homes too, like people share...
Some year or two ago, we generally said that the definitions of those two are a little bit squishy. But usually, a rooming house is in what looks like a single-family house by form, outside form, and volume and size, although they vary. And an SRO is typically in like a block building.
Right.
Like a downtown block building.
Well, they're usually designed for it also.
And they don't each have to be, but that's typically having...
They didn't have to be a store.
I think the rooming house actually does.
Okay.
The rooming house actually does have to be in that form.
Oh, in the, in a single family or...
But we don't specify form explicitly for a SRO.
Okay, thanks.
Can I ask, did you have some specific area in mind for this kind of thing? Because I have to say, I'm pretty skeptical of SROs in general because I think that they are a tool that can be easily used to exploit people and really diminish the size of apartments that, you know... I don't think that apartment size minimums are necessarily a bad thing. That size, that, you know, a human being is a certain size and requires a certain amount of space to live in a dignified manner.
Well, an SRO isn't an apartment. It's a, it's a bedroom that someone occupies and then they...
Yes, tell the person who's living in it, it's not an apartment, okay?
Well, can I answer your question?
Please.
So SRO, single residency occupancy, is a bedroom that people occupy. And then they share living space with other tenants of the same building. They share living rooms and kitchens and bathrooms and things of that nature. So it's not an apartment, it's something other than an apartment.
Well, I have to say that if you're paying rent for it, it's an apartment, no matter what you want to call it. That's a semantic difference. I have lived in properties like that in this town. I know... I have lived in properties like that in this town, I know what they are. And they are not what I would call dignified living for most people and I think most people would agree with me on that. I'm not saying there isn't a place for them in our society, but you're saying that we should open the regulations up to allow them?
I'm not saying anything.
I thought that you were, my understanding is that you were saying we should allow these in more places.
Mine's saying that we should look at our land use regulations to make sure that we are applying them fairly and evenly across the board so that if one type of use is a certain type of volume, for example, on the road or on other infrastructure, that it should be applied evenly across the board.
Okay, but how does that not amount to allowing SROs in more places than they are allowed now?
Well, it might amount to that, or it might amount to us saying that we think that some uses that are currently allowed in some districts also should not be allowed in those districts, could go either way.
Right, but which districts are we talking about here?
Well, that's really very specific, I don't think, I mean, I don't think that we're at that level yet. Right now, we're just trying to pick whether we even think you wanna like work on it or not, so.
I mean, I certainly agree that if there are discrepancies in how these laws are being applied, that that definitely needs to be adjusted, I'm all for that.
Well, that's what we would discover if people were interested in working on this topic.
And there's an SRO section in the regs that specifies like amenities and features or characteristics that were recently amended for, for certain reasons, but, you know, potentially minimum size could be a part of that.
What I'm not understanding though is if there was a perception that there is some sort of discrepancy in the first place, why would this even be on the agenda?
Pardon?
If, if there isn't already a perception that there's some sort of discrepancy here that needs.
Well, I'm saying that there's a discrepancy, so that's why.
Yeah, and I'm asking you where?
Uh, in rural districts in this town, some uses are allowed and other uses aren't allowed and I think that there might be a discrepancy there that the board should look at.
Okay.
That's like with Wyndham Housing, because they own that building.
Yeah, but we should move on because we only have this, these are all ten upside.
Are there any other pressing questions before we start about the list? Okay, let's go for it.
Okay, so. Direct us, does, and if I have, does anybody want a paper copy of the packet?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I feel very spare.
So is your suggestion, is your suggestion that we should look at the specifics?
Yeah, I mean, I've seen that.
Okay, so here, here are your ten projects. Steve is passing out a packet of sticky, um, sticky tabs with numbers that correspond. So one is the working lot regulations, sorry, I actually messed up in doing this so they don't quite follow along.
That's okay, we forgive you.
Two is brown urban steel planning, service center, maybe that's equally. You have, there are three, um, three buckets. Green is, it's an immediate priority, can, must, or must be addressed before town plan is adopted or while it's going on. Orange is the intermediate priority, can or must, it's moderate, intermediate, can or must be addressed after the town plan is finalized. And then red is, it's just a low or no priority, okay? So, let's see. I am happy to place, I need to make a copy of the packets. So we've got low there. We'll do.
So, we're, we're using these, it's more of a planning priority by using other means where there is.
Are there areas? And then I'm gonna put this one here.
I need it too.
Okay, so this is the immediate priority over here and then you've got intermediate and low to low. And for those of you who need packets, I'm gonna go make those.
Tom, how do you know whose color is blue?
I'm blue, they put it right in front of me.
I'm, I'm just putting my.
Oh, there's not, there's not seven colors?
I, I pressed, that's a good G S on red and then I realized that doesn't work.
Color and it'll work out.
Fine, I have the same color, so I'm gonna put my initials. All right, Bonnie?
Sure, whatever you say.
I, I have anxiety about this now because I don't know if I can rank them accurately on the ten for.
There's just three categories, so.
Oh, then I can't see the numbers from here, that's why, I was a little confused.
Um, he hasn't finished handing them out, yeah, I don't have all mine yet either. Yeah. Not, there aren't ten.
No, four, four.
Do you have a three? Do you already have a three?
No, because it's an orange, I'm assuming you just did one through whatever.
Well, there's three people with orange, so you have two, three, two.
And I just wanna be clear that the brown urban steel planning is not about the bridges.
It's not?
No, it's about, you know, where are there areas that, I mean.
I, I was all hired up, like we just said.
That one would be the. I'm missing a one, that goes to activate.
We will come back to get this.
Will it have big?
Yes.
And then we kind of.
Oh, you can put one where you want, whatever.
Well, you know, I mean, it was also kind of like the market.
It's a priority, then you put numbers. The highs are over huge.
Sue, I, I have to ask you, if that's not about the bridges.
Well, that can be a little part of it, but.
And why isn't it about the bridges?
Why isn't it? Because that's being dealt with by the select board and between the two towns.
These are the ones that are highest priority, then there's mid priority and low priority.
There might be.
I guess, I guess the question is.
Planning commission is not that.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, we're not, we're not really the decision makers on anything.
Launches means project number one.
Well, you give guidance to the select board, I just.
So you just, you think all these should be dealt with right away?
I got it.
Your select board is.
They are, but, but why they're telling the board is really impressive and you can start on numbers.
I don't think that's true about the browners.
Maybe we should have done letters.
Might not be a way, you are, there's always another way to do it. No, and you can, you can have as many as you want in each group, but don't forget the next step is gonna be like, what can you commit to? Okay, well, yeah, so, you know, because we can't, you don't have a lot.
Kind of low for a week. Yeah.
Everything really low.
I got lots of low.
Yeah, me too.
God, you stink it too.
Neighborhood center of zoning district.
Uh, so several people did write down.
Interesting.
Zoning district. I think. Parking lot regulations.
This has to do, the parking lot regulations is about some of the standards about parking lots, it's actually come up a couple of times.
I know, we get a lot.
Because these are where parking lots are very loud, as well as, you know, how, why does the drive on, where is the legislation about parking?
I mean, this is a public meeting, we have responsibility for the public.
We've thought that's been so over talking.
I was just gonna say, and I don't have to.
Okay.
It's the law here.
Yeah, it's not just a good idea, it's the actual law in Vermont.
This is on.
What is service center smart?
See, we're supposed to leave the HMO. So the service center has to be with the area of Cuddy Road that's like, not the Staples Plaza and stuff that they're around about.
We had the big discussion about the fact that the people couldn't do the service bays and that, that's what the neighborhood's.
That's neighborhood center, service center.
That is definitely high priority.
There's a bit of, there's been a bit of talk in town.
Where's the high priority?
The town, some vacant properties, like on Prospect Street, that's where the cattle ponds.
Now it says immediate and not high, that's making me.
I could have asked more questions and have staff or have a brainstorm, but I don't know if that means.
The idea is that can or must be.
I'm not sure, that'll be figured out in the next step maybe.
Oh, well, that's, I guess, to it right now.
You do this all the time.
I know, it's just fun.
Can or must be addressed before the town plan is adopted, the other is, you can wait till after the town plan, but we should, yeah.
Oh, I think that's.
There we go.
Parking lots, definitely have to go on the town plan. Brown Urban Handicap can be cut off his last.
Hey, Lindsay, which one did you say was, which one to talk about, uh, this one?
Yeah.
Thank you, Sue.
I think you may have had some cut off on the back, so maybe you can share. We're on this.
This is also, this is to go up here, I'm noticing that almost nobody is putting the same numbers on here as me.
Sixty-nine.
Uh, sorry, actually, over at, uh, the parking forms.
I was very impressed.
Is everyone actually saying that there are sticky tablets?
Yes.
There's anything that one of them says the low priority?
I feel comfortable with that, um, in case we need.
I haven't got any lows yet, but I probably will.
I think the capacity stuff will be a lot of.
Are you still working on it, John?
Other special, that's the, that one.
No, but you appreciate the thought.
Yes, did you not?
It's good exercise, good workshop.
Those were the low priority.
We used to do that all the time, it got you to the fluff and nobody really realized it, right? Oh yes, I got mine on the third priority, woo!
Okay.
No. I've been to this rodeo.
So, yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the ground floor commercial thing. So you're saying that the law was amended to allow residential? And then people are now saying that's a bad thing?
Somebody said it is a bad. A person brought it to the planning mission or brought it to the select board. I agree, but I will say, we've, you know, it could be worth taking a look at it. Well, I don't wanna, please, we've had some situations in the office where it's come up. So, it's allowed in certain places in downtown, it's not allowed in the block, uh, block kind of buildings?
Yeah.
But because the urban center is more than just the block buildings, did it open it up to allow some of it?
I think that's gonna end up being low priority for me because I don't really see, uh, ground floor commercial as, especially in the urban center, as being something that a whole lot of people are really gonna want in the first place. And that is the most commercial valuable land in town, so.
I thought I meant backwards.
Yeah.
Residential is what you meant to say.
Residential, the ground floor is not what people are going to want.
Yeah.
Is that what you said?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
But you said the word commercial.
You said the word commercial.
Instead of residential, but then your second part of the sentence.
Yeah, no, I, no, what I mean is that I, that is the most valuable commercial land and it should be, there's not a lot of people that are gonna wanna live on the ground floors in that area, so I don't see that as really as a priority.
Okay, okay, do you want me to put that down?
No, I'm gonna do it.
We need to.
Yeah, I'll be quick. I've already done. I don't take that long. I already know what to talk about. A natural and working land. It's important, but is that something that really leads me in before the town plan? About my historic resource, district boundaries.
Landlord, tenant liaison.
Oh, town, town owned lands, that's low priority.
Are you in an office? Where's there?
I'm not just gonna seize it.
Where's there? Were you doing that yet?
No, I don't think it seems to be in the town plan. This is intermediate. See, that's the skid. I kind of feel like that should be in the town plan. Yeah, I'm gonna go to time for her, to be honest.
All right. We're just gonna take a picture of these and then.
Take a five minute.
Let's do it.
No five minute break, we don't have time for that, you can, you can take a five minute break. And then we'll make you stay in your seat.
We're streaming live this activity.
ECTV should get a GoPro and then put it on one of our heads. Viewers can experience the, the exercise.
Where's my number two?
And a commissioner POV.
How did I end up over here? Oh, oh, because not. Okay, I'm, I'm, I mean, I do think that that is a high priority map. And I am definitely willing to put it on that, even if it's not technically about the bridges.
No, it's on two hours.
I guess the thing that I'm not really particularly understanding is, aside from the bridges, what are the joint planning?
When I first learned, it was just open ended, people wanted, no one here. People wanted an end zone or an also certain truth that go beyond, that's the way it's been. Sometimes I'm like, oh, we all get out there.
All right, listen up, we're in the middle of that phase, okay? Steve's gonna explain.
Why don't we?
It's the immediate.
What, the immediate or maybe?
Do we think, just to give me a. That's what I was thinking.
Do we think they'll all fit?
Okay. So for the next phase then. We've got three different places where you're gonna move everything that is just on this one, where everybody's immediate priorities went. So you're gonna take yours or the one that's the same color as yours. It'll work out, I promise. Uh, and you're gonna move it to, if you are willing and able to actually lead on the project or be one of the people that leads on the project, you're gonna take that sticky note and you're gonna put it right on this one here. And then if you can give some amount of support and time to that project, but you can't or aren't willing to be the lead on that project, you're gonna move your sticky note to here, which is for having a moderate amount of capacity. And then even if you think it's a great idea, but you just cannot commit any time to it, don't have the capacity, then you're just gonna move your sticky note to here. Uh, and then the last stage is something that staff is gonna do once we're all done moving those. Just as a summary of, if we end up with any numbers that don't get any leads, we're gonna know that that's something that probably can't get picked up right now. Uh, so this is gonna help us filter which things are actually shovel ready.
Sounds good.
And then we'll do this again with the moderate stage.
Yeah, we're gonna do it with the moderate and then we'll. Actually, we are gonna do it again with moderate, so we can set that up over here, actually.
Gee, I didn't even eat dinner yet.
That's unacceptable. Have to get some granola bars. Send them a bunch.
Sorry. One, two. Okay, so one time.
Yeah. Viewers there.
Move from the moderate. Move from the moderate or?
Or to any, to any of these three.
Oh, okay. Immediate, I see. Immediate, high, moderate, I see.
That's not me. That's all I do.
You know, the other question I have about this is how much actual work does any of these go and get involved?
We don't know yet, because it's still, it would have to be like the team working on it or whatever.
Right.
I have to kind of figure out.
So what is the moderate?
That's the one I wanted. That, you're going that. There we go. At the fourth line, I'm going to appear.
So do the last. Yeah, and that's.
Kind of reverse priority, less the south side, meaning the west.
So, um, my daughter, my only daughter. Intermediate. I have a good feeling that they've all got a little. The thing is, I think is, it's wonderful. It has a ton of character. I love the outdoor activities. I'm really from very custom.
Back when.
I'll tell you something. I tell people this over time. You can dress for thirty degrees. You can't dress for a hundred and twenty.
Which is, they still love what you can do.
Yeah.
Look, we're not giving it on.
Some of these topics are mine. I mean, I've actually owned the town owned lands. Oh, yeah.
I don't know. I'm kind of torn about whether or not some of these should be. Oh, no, no, no. I'm being better off. Never mind. These are all immediate priority. This is our personal willingness to devote time to these. Yeah, I think three and four are probably the two that I'm least worried about. In terms, I mean, there's definitely immediate priority, but in terms of how much input do I feel I should have into it? Of, of the five that I selected for, I mean, your priority, I think those are two.
There's similar, um, now, but if it's a topic you set, that's kind of why nobody thinks, because the town is worth it.
Either the whole small or.
Interesting, so.
I think that's something that definitely needs to be talked about. It's just not an immediate priority.
This one has, to me, a lot of.
And I definitely want to be part of that conversation when it happens. Oh, so. Immediate priority. Two, high capacity. I would not part in that.
Do you have your other?
Yeah, I have.
You can snow it. It's just like. It happens. I'll say this. It happens. I wouldn't say, you know, tons.
Yeah.
It's like something.
That's like what it's been from the.
Actually, yeah.
As long as it's a really close, it's a year.
No care.
Oh, sorry.
I'm, I'm really coming out of my normal part. Sublected from my experience of reading Seattle before I moved here. Where the business parties. And all of these top person extraneous are building what we're essentially SROs. And once you allow, you can't get rid of them. And they're gonna start using them to exploit workers. Obviously, this is. I think, yeah. Do you have any, um, do you have any thoughts on, I, I can put it on if you want. It's the natural and working lands district. Number, okay.
We'll see. We're not knowing.
It's a start.
Given, um. Given the town time and the town plan, um, items that we need to do. Steve is gonna kind of compile this and, um, was thinking we could move on to talk about the town plan chapters, because that's important. Um, and then if we're able to report back out at the end, we will. If not, we'll.
So what's the output?
The output is identifying.
You're gonna take those and then you say, okay, we can work on these or we can't work on those, or you do something else.
We're gonna come up with the list of like the suggested, you know, where, where do they rank? Like, these are the ones where somebody's willing to take them on. Do we want to take them on?
Sure. Okay, so that's, that'll be the output.
Yep.
Thanks for organizing that. I feel like that was a fun and clear activity.
Yeah, so we actually went, went to these, you know, and thought it was going.
Probably would've made it a couple of weeks, but sorry. Probably work better in person than on the whiteboard, although it is pretty slick the way you had it. Yeah, that was fun. Thank you, everybody.
Similar kind of logic, though. Should we cover, do you think we should cover the outreach?
Yeah.
Part, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Um, town plan outreach. Um, I think the survey is closed. Is it?
I didn't close it.
Oh, okay. Anyway, the survey's still available. But, um, we can check in about community conversations, any updates, any plans.
Can I just ask quickly, is there a reason that we would need to close the survey anytime soon?
Just at some point, you know, staff and then with our review and input needs to actually kind of start finalizing the documents. So, you know, if that input, yeah. Dan?
Question. Uh, Sue, you had a, um, community conversation on the 21st, I think. Did that end up going through in August?
I've done a few of them. Is that the one at sixty-nine?
The one you emailed us about it, unfortunately wasn't available.
Yeah. So, um, I think since the last time, I don't know, uh, John, maybe, no, you weren't here in August and I wasn't here in August. But, um, John and I did a community conversation with Families First. And then, um, several of you attended with staff, um, a community conversation at sixty-nine A. That might be the one on the 21st you talked about.
Okay.
My dates are. Um, and then I also completed one.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I did, um, my neighbors. Yeah, I messaged, um, like twenty-five, twenty-seven neighbors who I had contact info for. And, um, ended up having a conversation with five of them.
Oh.
So three one, three one day and two the next.
Yeah.
So, but yeah, it was a whole, kind of a whole different experience than, you know, the other times I did it where there was like twenty, twenty-five people and limited time. I mean, we just kept on talking and filled two hours and got really some depth of comments compared to like.
It was wonderful doing the one at Families First. It was very helpful for me personally.
Right.
And then, of course, sixteen ninety, I think we had more commissioners there than we had. Employee people. Not that that's a bad thing, but there was a lot of interest.
Yeah, there was good listening. Understanding. Um, what I would say, I mean, I, I think I've said it before, the two things, well, the, maybe two, maybe three things I'm hearing a lot of is, um, you know, the condition of our sidewalks and the neighborhood transportation. So, I mean, you know, it doesn't really matter what group is. Everybody wants sidewalks in good conditions, um, that are, you know.
Well, that's what I heard.
And safe crossings. And almost always when I would ask, they prioritized buses and sidewalks over bike lanes.
That's what I heard too, whether it was my neighbors or Rotary group, you know, and those are all professionals with cars. Let's just broadly, you know, average. When I brought that question up, they were, they were all saying high priority, so.
It's fascinating in a way, isn't it, that, um, you know, we talked about sometimes exotic things that we want to do, wonderful new ideas. And when we talked to the three groups, I talked, well, two groups really, to be fair, but they're always like, fix the sidewalks and I want it crossed safely. And I feel fearful was the other one, you know, at times in downtown.
Not transportation wise, but because of just the vibe, let's just say.
I think because of the, I think because of the people that they walk around.
Right. Yeah, I mean, I heard that a lot from the groups I talked to as well.
Yeah, I was, actually, I was thinking about that just last night because I rode my bicycle downtown and, you know, well after dark. It was like ten, eleven o'clock at night. And there was, at one point, there was a, a group of people just hanging out on the sidewalk and talking, and there was no one else around. And I found myself thinking, you know, if I was a person walking down the street and suddenly the entire sidewalk is blocked by this group of people just hanging out, that would make me very uncomfortable.
Yes.
You know, if, I certainly wouldn't think the same way if I were in Manhattan at, you know, late at night and there was a group of people on the sidewalk, because there would be people everywhere.
Right.
You know, it's a completely different thing.
Well, you're acclimated to it.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, you're accustomed when you're in Manhattan to be walking around all sorts.
Not only am I acclimated to it, but just the, the relative number of people on the street. You know, Jane Jacobs is, is famous for talking about eyes on the street and how that changes the perception of a town.
Anyway, it was just fascinating to me how basic the people's needs were as compared to sometimes the discussions that go on in terms of planning needs.
The, the other big one that I see, and I've typed up Tom's notes and different notes that have come to me. The other big one is people really, um, and there'll be a caveat here, but the community events, music.
That's true.
For the most part, like, um, now there are people that feel displaced by this. But for the most part, they appreciate that. It helps make downtown feel good. It's lively. And, and not, you know, it doesn't just have to be happening downtown, but they appreciate it kind of artwork, music, activities and events.
Nice.
So.
You know, I didn't get a, a chance to say this during the community conversation that day when the subject of access to the toilets came up. But, uh, you know, my mother is a disabled person and one of the things that she frequently impressed upon was that in New Jersey, where she lived at the time, New Jersey has a law that if you have a bathroom, you cannot deny anyone access to that bathroom, period. So hearing from people that when there are these events downtown and porta potties are being provided, that they are in any way being discouraged from using those porta potties, that is a really big problem for me.
Does anyone have any planned community conversations they're gonna conduct? Maybe.
I am in talks right now with The Root and with Out in the Open.
Yeah, I remember you saying last meeting you'd try to do that.
Yeah, I, I have reached out to them. We are trying to make time for scheduling.
Okay.
Um, there's maybe happening with Out in the Open, um, in a couple of weeks, but I'm not certain yet. The Root is less certain, but it will definitely be happening.
Okay, cool, great.
And I should also say that I made an audio recording of the, of the conversation at sixty-nine A. It is currently unedited and over two gigabytes in size. And it's not like I can just post it someplace for everyone to listen. I, I have to edit it down to a format that is much smaller, but it will be available. The only question I have is where can I make that available? Do, we don't have a file server that we have access to or?
No, you don't. I mean, you know, you could forget to make it. I can, I can share.
Okay.
Well, one thing that is, will there, has there been or will there be other community conversations that will also be recorded by you and put in the same place?
Any, any that I do will definitely be recorded.
Cause I was gonna say it's just sixty-nine A.
Yeah, I, I just spent two hundred dollars on an audio recorder to do this and actually more than that because memory cards and everything, but.
Okay, yeah. Should we cover the, the letter we got from the commercial property owner?
Yeah, yeah, because there's one of the requests for a focus group.
Yeah.
And so.
Yeah, sure. So you all saw in the supporting docs, the, um, the write-up from a local property owner, multiple property owner, and I think multiple business owner, Celine LaCroy. And Sue passed that along and my takeaway from the, from the, um, the actual write-up is just like, give us, you know, listen to us and give us more attention and we have a lot of input. There wasn't actually specifics in that write-up, but I probably, I asked you about that and she gave me a couple of examples of, you know, what she heard from Celine. Seems like there's potential for a lot of engaged, um, uh, input or needs or, you know, things that they feel are too restrictive. So you all read that? What do you think? How should we respond?
I read it, but I don't remember it.
It was, um, it was about commercial property owners and, oh, encouraging the town plan process to do a specific.
Thank you.
So does she want to set up a conversation? Like, does she have a group of people that she wants to do that?
She.
That was my immediate response.
Yeah, I, I don't think she wanted to set up the conversation, but she definitely had some contacts that she was willing to.
I think since they went to the effort, that we owe it to that group to sit and have a conversation with them. Know what comes out of it. Who knows? We ought to have a conversation. And I'm, I for one, am willing to volunteer my time to sit down with them. By the way, is she a property in the neighborhood center area we were talking about?
Oh, right.
Yeah. Um, well, she's been, yeah, engaged with the, the planning or land use rights recently, so. The, which, which is great, someone who's actually come up against some, let's just say frustrations or something. Looking to participate.
I think we ought to at least respond to her and say, listen, we'd love to talk to you.
So are you thinking of, of conducting a community conversation like these with them or something else? Yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know if it'll be like the same nine questions. I think it's like the timing is perfect because we'll be getting into land use and economic development. And so I think it could be broader. I mean, I definitely think those could be useful. But I might want to probe on some of the other economic development type aspects that she gets into the letter. And I will say, I mean, she was somebody who wanted the garage base to face forward and I think, you know, she was. Well, I don't want to project, but I will say is she dove into our regulations. She understands what the regulations were trying to do. She actually, you know, further researched and sent me some links from some new openness communities and, you know, understands the potential, like, and was excited about that, um, but still wanted to kind of share the experience and.
So I'd happy, I'd be happy to volunteer my time. So, I'd happy, I'd be happy to volunteer my time.
Great. One, one thought I have is to thread the needle maybe, or if, they may have a lot of land use regs sort of ideas to contribute, but if we're just working on the town plan right now, it doesn't necessarily delve into those specifics, like which way does the garage bay door phase or should they have the burden of, of building sidewalks on their new development? So, you guys can, you know, manage that sort of input that they may get however you want.
When we had the conversations honestly with the groups we had, we followed roughly the format, but by the same token, you know, if old people wanted to talk about crossing the street, then we let them talk about crossing the street, right?
This was important to them.
I'm sorry, we can't talk about that, we have to talk about, you know, other stuff.
Yeah, I mean, if they give some specific rig things, you can jot those down, file it away for future consideration.
Well, I think it's after we had talked about it, you know, you pointed out, we looked at a lot of how to reduce barriers for housing. So, I would probably frame it as, you know, what are the ops, some of the obstacles you run into? Like, I'm not looking for specific land use tweaks, but what are some of the obstacles so that we can, you know, maybe reduce that to spurs and more?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that I would really like to hear some specific concerns. I did briefly read through this and I have to say, I have had to take it with a very sizable chunk of salt because you're talking about a group of people who are, you know, they have a direct financial interest in having the law go their way. You know, this is something that's, that's said very often by a lot of people, businesses are job creators. That is entirely not true, it's completely false. Businesses do not create jobs, demand creates jobs, economies create jobs. Businesses fulfill that demand and that involves hiring people, but they are not creating those jobs. It is their customers who is, who are creating those jobs, you know? Commercial property owners do not create housing unless they are actual housing builders. You know, it's, a lot is, is just so self-serving. But at the same time, I don't have any interest in there being barriers to people who are actually going to build housing, you know? So, what I wanna hear from them is, okay, what specific problems are you actually facing? Because another one of the things she says in here is that, you know, oh, you know, you know, the availability of property in order to build upon is a problem. Well, that's not a problem in this town, there is tons of land that is undeveloped in this town. The problem is, is they don't wanna pay the money that people who own the land want to receive for that land in order to build on it. So, you know, okay, you know, I don't see people building in this town, you know? Building, if this is a for-profit exercise and you're a profit for, you're a for-profit business, well, where are the buildings that you say that you're building? They don't exist, you know? So, if there's a reason why you're not building and that reason is regulatory, then yeah, that's something we definitely should be looking at and making recommendations about. But I've long said about the planning department and the planning commission in general is that planning doesn't build houses, money builds houses. We're not a money group, you know, we can set the ground rules, we can make the recommendations that say, hey, we should open this up for development. I'm all for that, but no matter what we do, somebody's gotta pony up the money to do that development and that's not our job. So.
Thank you for that. Great, so John, Sue, get that done, thank you. Anything about the community outreach or town plan outreach regarding the land use workshop?
No, some of it, you know.
Oh, so that's on the horizon?
It's coming.
Okay, great, let's move on to the draft chapters.
Look, you know, I think I just say one more thing on that subject, okay? Yes, we do have an obligation to listen to them, but not because they went to a whole lot of trouble to put together a document for us. We have an obligation to listen to everyone who is a constituent in this town and their ideas about land use and planning and the future of this town.
Yeah, thanks for saying that, I mean, I agree with that, I applaud, you know, the effort to write a document to submit to us and make requests. But, yeah, I view them, when I read that and I thought steps forward, but I, you know, certainly wanna hear from all of us and what the consensus is. And it sounds like community conversation, like any other group, sounds fair, 'cause it's like, you know, here's 69A, here's elderly people in a home, here's my neighbors, here's business owners, you know, it's just a different, a different segment.
I mean, I, I may be skeptical of that effort, but I am in no way interested in getting in their way of making money.
Well, we're trying to balance all the, all the different, all the different elements of, you know, people in town and, and this is one of them, one segment of them. Okay, should we do the municipal utilities and facilities draft chapter first?
Yes.
Okay.
Is this just me or does everybody else's copy at least electronically look here?
It does, when it converted in the PDF, I don't know.
Did you see in the email, if you go back out, Sue, included Word documents of those chapters?
Yes.
I didn't send you the word.
No, I haven't.
Okay.
I just, when I opened up the PDF, I was just wondering because I'm running Linux on this machine.
Okay.
So, I wasn't sure if it was the specific PDF task that I had was not translating it correctly.
No, no, it was a weird, yeah. And let me just say, I, I thought I was gonna work more on Monday than I did and I didn't, so I stripped out the goals, policies and actions. I am working on that, it will come back, but I didn't, I just didn't work on Labor Day, so.
Wow, we shouldn't have worked on Labor Day at all.
Yeah, I'm kidding, a lot of times we're all working on it, I don't know if we got some.
Yeah, I don't know that.
Well, I'm sorry they're not there.
Is that why they're a little late for it?
So, anyway, so, I, I'm not settled on the name, but basically it's community facilities, services, services and utilities. So, we're talking about municipal buildings, services, getting into the other infrastructure that, you know, or, like the telecommunications, obviously that. So, tried to keep this to, you know, really brief, identify any major facility needs that would be part of a capital plan. For example, you'll see there right above the memorial park pool, also DPW, there's some questions about this building, work that needs to be done and it's underutilized, so, tried to identify those areas. For educational facilities, really just kind of the town government does not have any role in the education. So, really from a planning perspective, it is about, you know, the numbers and the facilities and fashion thing. And are we, you know, in a growing community, we identify with neighbor new schools, we're not growing, enrollment is kind of steady. And in the longer term, heads decline, so. Childcare, we're required to address under state statute, so that's why childcare is in here, I've gotta work a little bit on that section.
I was gonna say, 'cause I kind of skipped over the heading and I went right to Green Mountain Power, like, what do they have to do with childcare?
Yeah, sorry about that, childcare I have to, to put in, but then, and then talking about the infrastructure.
You know, there's one thing that I have to ask about the educational facilities part. And that comes to mind because the few times that I've been at a high school, I haven't really noticed any bicycle parking there. And so, that brings to mind transportation, the word I'm looking for, ramifications for the town as we transition to a hopefully less fossil fuel powered future.
Though we had bike rags up there at the school.
I thought so too.
At the school specifically?
At the high school.
Well, my experience of attending public meetings there is that masses of bicycles have been chained to each other or to fences and I have not seen a single bicycle rack.
I can look into it, I'll look into it, I mean, it's something we'd like.
That would be like unbelievable.
I mean, I don't wanna be one of those people, but, you know, when I was a kid, we rode our bicycles to school and we walked to school.
Well, I do see kids riding their bikes to school, so I assume that they have a place to put them, maybe it's just not obvious to them.
It's not really that obvious.
Or put outside and more baggy.
Oh, I, I wanna be clear and say that I have not seen them, that doesn't mean they don't exist, I just haven't seen them because where I park my bike,
at that side end, there aren't any, yeah. Sue, are you finished with the summary?
Yep.
People's commissioners thoughts on this chapter, suggestions, missing parts, general tone? General policies?
There's no policies.
Right.
I, I wonder if there shouldn't be more discussion about telecommunications?
In what way?
Well, you know, a high-speed fiber to rural areas is a very important topic in, in Vermont. And as someone who has spent their career in internet communications, I think more than one paragraph is something that we might wanna consider, I mean, especially because it impacts things like transportation infrastructure so much. I mean, to the point where, you know, Governor Scott wanted to give people $10,000 to move to Vermont if they could work remotely, you know? It's, it's a major challenge to this area that there are so few telecommunications providers and that the services that they offer outside of the immediate downtown area are very low.
Yeah, well, that's hence DP fiber and why we're part of that communications utility district.
Yeah.
I, I think I could, you know, expand more on that in case the town ever decides to drop out because that is the way the rural parts of town are going to get it. It's gonna take some time and it's a bit more challenging, some of the federal money went away. I'm wondering, I mean, I could do a paragraph under planning considerations on the importance of that.
Sue, what's the status of that municipal planning grant funded capital, capital planning?
Yeah, it'll still move forward, it's not gonna be ready for this.
Okay. But if, let's just, if, if it was ready, would it help inform this chapter? Is that the sort of work they're doing or are they just devising spreadsheets and tables for town administration?
I'm looking. Yeah, I mean, I, I'm looking at what's in the town's current capital plan.
Yeah.
So, and that's informing this, I think what's gonna happen out of that project is more of how do we fund it and how do we distribute it, so.
Is, is, is town outreach or the town residents and interested parties contributions to the town plan outreach, is it kind of very feeling like it's gonna inform this chapter as much as others? Because it could easily be that this chapter is more heavily biased towards staff's recommendations about how the, how the departments should run or what's needed. For example, I mean, if, if nobody, if no residents in town who weren't staff and who don't work here and experienced this building were just like, this isn't on my radar at all, I don't care if, you know, bonding up $3 million to upgrade this building, but yet all the staff in this building are like, yeah, this place is outdated and needs improvement. How do you, do we just defer to the people, the staff who work here? 'Cause what if the townspeople are saying property taxes are too high, we can't afford big projects?
Well, I don't think that I, I don't mean to be a fluke, but I don't think identifying in the town plan that we have an issue with this building in terms of the fact that we would either need to make life safety improvements or calling out that it's underutilized is committing us to anything and so, nor mentioning living memorial park or the DPW facilities as needing upgrades. I mean, they're pretty well documented, how they're in the community. And so, I kind of drew on at least for living memorial park, like, there was public outreach. I think I'm comfortable having that mentioned.
Yeah.
You know, in the public process, you're right, I mean, it's heavily staff, but it's not really necessarily what we just want. They're kind of documented.
Sure, didn't mean to imply it was just that.
Yeah, no, I don't think, I.
Yeah, no, thanks for.
I, I was really thinking more in terms of, well, what do we want, you know, and should that be in this document? Because one of the things I've been thinking about lately is that I'd really like to see us build a new library in this town. Our existing library is now over 50 years old and it's kind of small and there's no, I mean, I drive there on my bicycle in the rain and there's no place for me to hang up my raincoat when I get there, you know? And it's a place that is one of the most popular places to hold public meetings in this town and it's really not set up for that.
I don't think the town plan should, is, should be just, you know, like the wants.
Yeah.
I think there should be the documented needs because it's, you know, good for eight years and we'll use it to, you know, try to get great funds or, you know, set our priorities.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if we were hearing a lot from the public that there was a desire for a new library, the library trustees and all their kind of background planning in this town would just like, certainly make it in. I mean, one of the questions we did ask people, are we missing services in town?
Yeah.
True, yeah.
But.
Yeah, can help inform it when it all gets collated. For me, maybe the plan is that it'll be in there and it's just a draft, but the existing chapter has maps of
Yeah, there'll be maps.
town facilities and utilities and
Yeah, there'll be.
coverage area, okay, and the town parks.
Yeah.
And I know you want typos and minor things by email, but recycling is not dual-stream, it's single-stream, right?
Yes.
Okay, that's my one typo. Anything else on this chapter, folks? Okay.
No, I guess I'm just sort of like reading this in, in the way that I might read a corporate annual report or, or earnings statement, you know, where they tend to identify, well, these are our future challenges, you know? This, this is where we are now, this is what we're looking at in the future that we know that we're gonna need to address in the future and there's a certain amount of uncertainty. And, and I was just wondering because, you know, I've never been involved in writing a town plan like this before, like, how much about the future do we talk about, like, what, what our goals are for this town? Like, you know, the fact that we have a limited number of high-speed internet providers and a limited speed of service and, you know, the fact that, you know, maybe we want a new library, maybe we want a new town hall, maybe we want to do something to attract educational institutions to this area. I don't really know.
I'll give you my personal opinion, I do think the town plan does need to look into the future because we are talking about eight years. That said, I don't think the planning commission can unilaterally say, well, we need A, B and C, right? Particularly with capital items which are large expenses, you know, there needs to be some sort of formal process associated with deciding that this is a priority and that, you know, there's either money or not money or how we're gonna raise the money because it usually involves some sort of, you know, tax, tax type increase, right, on, on the public. So, I'm assuming, Sue, that, you know, the things that you've talked about in this are, have been generally recognized as what we're going to be doing in the future, which isn't necessarily, necessarily saying that that's the only thing, but that's probably where we have a basis in fact in terms of gathering some sort of consensus on. Doesn't mean that a library isn't a good idea, but we probably would have to have some sort of process for putting a library out there, something we want to aspire to, right? Before we put it into a town plan.
We resource, resource center was mentioned, I think you said a place for gathering like the meeting, the town meeting, whatever, things to that effect, so.
Sure, and those are all great ideas and I think that, that there needs to be some sort of process that says, we're gonna start thinking about these things, we're gonna start talking about them, we're gonna start envisioning how they might occur in the future. I mean, living memorial, I, I, I hear all the time about, you know, how we should be doing more with our memorial. So, from my perspective, there's clearly a consensus from the community that this should be a priority. Doesn't mean that the library wouldn't be, it just needs to bubble up somehow, there needs to be a process for bubbling it up. I don't know if there is a process today, is there?
Well, that, that's kind of what I'm trying to get at, is that, I mean, if we here as the planning commission are not the people who are empowered to say, this is where we think this town should go in the future, then who is?
I, I, I certainly think I'm a very bright man, but I wouldn't wanna say that I'm empowered to dictate where Bradleyburg is gonna go in the future.
Well, I didn't say where it's going to go.
I think it's a good point though to, to identify a gap in the process for identifying future capital needs and say, hey, let's figure out what we might do so that the next time one of these rolls around or the next time we have a capital plan rolls around, we do have some outreach and formal process for gathering that consensus, right?
Yeah, but what I, I really wanna be clear that what I'm not saying is that we're gonna put in this document, this is what we're going to do in the future, because we have no power to really do that. But to say that this is what we think we should be doing in the future is a very different thing.
A little bit of input I'll give is that I think there's certain limited things that almost everybody can get on board with as far as predicting the future, like flooding, climate change, population and demographics. They've been level or flat and aging for like 50, 60 years now.
Yeah, so.
So, I'll probably continue. Yeah, I think most people are on board with that. But then a lot of other things are, people are unsure of or then values and priorities start meshing with that quite a bit. And then it's, it's just hard to get everybody on the same page with just like, do we just want housing to expand into the forest or do we want, you know, we're businesses to get priority or, you know, you'll find different sizable percentages on either side of that. So, it's, it's hard to, yeah. I, I've never been a part of a large group of people or even seven, like all, all having one mind with, you know, aligned values and priorities, so. The more we can identify ones that seem as factual and, you know, like the climate change and the flooding thing, then I think that's helpful. But Lindsay?
11.2.1.
Oh, we're in the next chapter?
Oh, are we not there yet? I moved on, sorry.
Well, are we already, Sue?
Can I just respond? You know, I mean, the library has come up in a lot of the community conversations. It's a real long about question. I know they've got a major grant going on to, to make improvements for energy efficiency and also to outdoor spaces and ADA accessibility. You know, I mean, I think calling out maybe its importance to the community and the lack of meeting, it, there really, I mean, we used to always depend on Rattleboro Graduate School, like to have nice community meetings and stuff. And you don't have that anymore. So, I mean, I think you did point out some needs there and it's worth, you know, whether you wanna go as far as to say, we need a new library, you know, I don't know that realistically with some of what I see as higher priority needs. But, you know, if the planning commission wanted to, we could throw that in there and see how it goes.
Well, it might be worth noting, as far as like the community center aspect goes, that Rattleboro doesn't have one. And where that puts us in regards to other towns of similar sizes and to note that other towns of much smaller sizes in our vicinity do have places that they call community centers. I was at one recently in Wind Hall and it wasn't until I was in there that it struck me like, oh, huh, we don't have an analogous building in Rattleboro. And we have other buildings that we use in a similar capacity but not a singular place. So, that might be interesting to say as us compared to other places to note that.
Or do we have space where we could create that? Because it seems like we have a lot of empty space.
Underutilized.
Undergroundized space. So, let's just see if we could recreate something.
Might be worth thinking about.
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to the natural resources chapter. Steve, take it away with whatever comments or summary you care.
So, this probably isn't gonna look very surprising compared to the existing chapter. It's primarily just updating the data that is cited and reflecting our recent planning work as well as the work of the conservation commission over the last five to eight years, just to make sure that that is reflecting what has actually been going on. But primarily, yeah, just updates on the existing chapter. So, probably nothing surprising here. A lot of it is just making sure that we are ticking the boxes as far as what's required by statute.
Lindsay?
On 11.2.1, my suggestion is that we not limit it to cooperating with groups, which it sounds like that's a list of different types of groups that we cooperate with, but that we also include individual property owners when we're talking about addressing the threat of invasive species.
But you're saying?
So cooperate with individual property owners and private local, state, and federal groups.
Okay.
That's my suggestion.
There's a, a number of additions of quote, where feasible, end quote, in this draft versus our existing chapter. I wonder if that's like, kind of like bringing some of these goals, policies, and actions down to earth or moderating them by adding that in? Or if it's just like kind of had a way to cover, cover one's butt or something with some of these? Some of this? Because that's, that's in there a number of times and I, yeah, I feel like it's a bit of a watering down of a lot of them.
My intent was definitely the former, but I mean, to the extent that anything in here is binding, shit isn't. In, in that, in a legal sense. Like, it's not like we actually can be, you know, held to, you must do this because it says anyhow. I, I think it probably helps out with the latter as well, but that wasn't a particular concern. I think there were a few statements that seemed overly expansive in how much they were.
Overly rigid?
Yeah, overly rigid to the point of conflicting with other goals in the town plan as of at least how we think about them now, in a way that I didn't think was necessarily necessary. And this is certainly not to say, you know, let's bulldoze everything and pay the. But, yeah, adding the feasibility catch was mostly to try to make it more applicable to what we actually deal with. Because most of the concerns at that time may not have been directly addressed in the land use regulations, but since then, they have been addressed in the land use regulations. And then for the one about class one wetlands, we just, we don't have them.
So, we don't have them? That's why, that's why that struck me. And then with some of the goals and actions that were removed from the existing chapter in our existing town plan, it got me thinking that at least some of those, I have them all memorized in my mind right now, but at least some of them seem like they were kind of more like squishy, like dealing with the, like townspeople and private entities, like in less than the actual like nuts and bolts of, of town governance. But it made me start thinking like, oh, a couple of meetings ago, we talked about how we, at least some of us thought it would be a good idea in the implementation matrix to maybe have another column, not just for the lead responsibilities of certain things being town government entities, but maybe like highlighting some private entities or nonprofits or, or certain groups to, once again, not that any of this is binding really, but to kind of give people the, the nudge or the motivation to, to play a role in some of these things. So then, by having a bunch of these things, like encourage enjoyment and participation of open space, enhance the appreciation of Rattleboro's natural environment. Those were two goals in the existing one and they're not in this new one. And I, once again, I think those things are kind of squishy and not nuts and bolts of town government, but those can be things that if they stayed, then in the implementation matrix, I don't, I can't think of any. Friends of the West River Trail might be, might, might be a, have a lead responsibility for one of the actions.
Yeah.
So, I see some value in that unless we decided months ago that we just wanted this town plan to be really slimmed down and, you know, just really town government targeted.
No, I think we had talked about like, it was the, you know, what are those things that you can do that are free and that can contribute? And like the way I was envisioning that is maybe a text box in the formatted plan, which would be like, wanna get outside and appreciate, check out Friends of West River Trail.
A little calls to action.
A nice photograph. The calls to action.
Sort of personal calls to action.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It's a good idea, though.
Yeah.
With the first goal, it says, yada, 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 complies with the land use regs, yada, yada, yada. Isn't that a little circular? Because the land use regs means it comply with the town plan.
I don't see it that way.
Oh, okay. That's fine then. We don't need to dwell on it.
So, just to be sure that the way I wrote it is coming off as I intended it to be understood. The goal was that development is reviewed to ensure that it complies with the LUR.
Don't just let, don't just forget about the regs or be lax with them, just like follow them.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, that helps clarify for me.
So, it, it, the intent was mostly to sort of mutually reinforce so that we remember the town plan when we're using the LUR and vice versa.
That helps. I'll just go again because I'm on a roll here. I didn't see anything about accessibility to the Connecticut River from like the downtown area. And one thing I, I mean, personally I'm interested in it, but also I've heard from, you know, a lot of people over the years that Rattleboro has turned its back on the river. That's the quote, and that's said lamentingly. And so, I think the.
It's not untrue.
Yeah, and the river is a, you know, natural resource and the waterways are talked about in this chapter. But as far as, and trails are talked about in this chapter. I think that's relevant to this chapter. I don't know what the exact specific, you know, solution would be, but at least as a striving end goal or thing to aim for. I think it could be in there.
I mean, I can think of solutions, but I don't think people want to hear them.
As far as feasible.
They may involve bulldozers.
Right. And then again, the thing about, well, no, you do, there are some maps in here, but. Oh, I think a trails map could be really nice in here. Because then it could also show like, hey, this, this is where linkages are maybe missing or connectivity is missing. Like superimposed upon an existing trails map.
Okay, think about that. Think about it.
Good, is Jeff Nusen still under contract with this?
Yeah.
He's the maps guy in the regional?
Yeah, yeah. I wanna go back to your river accessibility and I just don't know that I would. I understand we talk about trails here, I mean, trails are also kind of a land use and so, looking at the Berlin model, it's like there, there might be a little meshing and moving around as we get to land use. My concern with accessibility to the river is the state, you know, so what does that look like? Because the state is pretty, with their river quarters and their buffers and that kind of thing. Yeah. I'm sure we could write it in some way, I'm not sure if it's better here in natural resources or in land use or economic development.
Lots of things can be couched under the term explore.
Right.
Yeah.
Maybe that's where the river lives. You know, the town will explore opportunities to connect to the river.
And one thing too, and maybe it's true everywhere or just in Vermont, but so much attention's given to forest blocks. And I think that is important, you know, things like moose and bear and deer and lynx and marten and whatever, maybe not marten, but they need those long pieces and, but. And I know there's lots of regulatory and law protections around wetlands, so that, that's covered too. But when I see these, these sections, and I'm kind of mixing up if it's in the existing chapter or in your draft, but when, when a lot of focus, when the majority of focus is put on forest blocks, it's like, that's where the wildlife is, that's where the best thing. But wetlands produce the most, the most like ecological productivity. Upland forests have, you know, they, they're, they're the largest stretches because of lack of development. But, you know, you go to the retreat meadows and the amount of fish and geese and beaver, that's way more like animal biomass, mammal biomass and bird and fish than like rabbit, whatever, some of those mountain tops, you know, forest blocks are in the west part of town, so.
I think that's definitely true for Rattleboro.
Yeah. So, I mean, the, the implications of like valuing forest blocks to our land use regs are, are clear because, you know, protecting them, the, the wetlands are already ruled out from development because of state laws. So, I kind of see why we don't talk about the wetlands so much. But as far as highlighting the natural resources that are important.
Yeah, I mean, at the very least, now that you mention it, we've got this, you know, beautiful large map of Rattleboro forest blocks by pay from priority. We don't have any map of what lands here are designated as wetlands.
Right. And primary.
I mean, not even just from an informational basis, you know?
Yeah, yeah, right.
That's what I guess.
As far as maps of any of the things that have come up, it's, it's certainly possible. None of the things that have been brought up are things that I'm not aware of, data sets already existing for, so we can make it happen. It's just gonna add length. I love maps. But Jeff may or may not be happy to make more maps. But yeah, if we're, if we're wanting to see each and every one of those things that the A and R Atlas is tracking as a layer, it would probably be the cleanest to just have them each be in their own single map. So, like wetlands as one, we're gonna cover the floodplains in a different part of the town plan. So, that probably doesn't need to be repeated here. But if it's a trail network map, but a wetlands map, I don't think that's getting huge in scope. But if there are more things than that, then it's probably a discussion that needs to be had about how much we can really justify showing.
If you're gonna discuss something like floodplains in a different chapter, then I might suggest that you note that in this chapter. Because I think that it would be not unreasonable that people might think that it would be in this chapter and.
Good point.
People don't always know where else to look, so. I don't know how robust the index is and that's where if there is an index, but.
Not yet.
Yeah, so, that would be my suggestion.
Well, it could be in the.
It'd be a good little call out box, like, looking for info on floodplains, go here.
Right. Are the existing conditions, you're talking about flood risk maps, Steve? Or are you talking about just floodplain existing? You're talking, not about FEMA maps, but about.
I was talking about FEMA, FEMA certification.
Okay. So, in this section though, part of existing conditions, I guess I'm wondering in fact, since the last town plan, is this a good place to even document? Since you've mentioned some, some of the specific streams and brooks and so forth, a good place to mention the actual floods that have occurred since the last town plan and damage that occurred due to them or.
I wouldn't do that in this chapter, but where I thought you were gonna go is we have restored floodplain. And so I think, you know, talking about P K M P or talking about Morris Terrace and returning to natural function, like I would want to keep it in its natural function, not. Okay.
It can be more. It could be more.
Right. This is one I, just to say what I'm talking about, a couple of years ago, there were a variety of stream floodings that wiped out bridges that I think could be.
That will be addressed in land use, but we do need to put those limits. We're gonna put that in land use.
That's in land use, okay.
Partially protected for conservation. I think the only other thing I had was that. Oh, yeah, I think in this draft it talks about impaired waterways, Crosby Brook and part of the Whitestone Brook for different reasons, well, and Kettle Pond. And then the existing chapter or town plan talks about the waste management zone in the Connecticut River below the wa, wastewater treatment facility. But anyway, for all those things taken as a whole, I didn't see an action or policy about like striving to make the, the wastewater treatment facility is a different thing, but striving to make those impaired waterways not impaired. That seems like a.
That's gonna be in the municipal facilities section because like the Whitestone is E coli impairment, Crosby Brook is sedimentation, then that's from stormwater. So, that's where those policies.
Is that in this document?
No, no, yeah, because I stripped it out because I didn't finish it.
I just was trying to look for the space that you were, the part where you were talking about.
Oh, you did talk, water quality is on page two.
Yeah. Yeah.
Crosby and Wetstone are on there.
So, to Lindsay's point, should there be a reference made, or even temporarily a parenthetical put in here that says, see page et cetera for more information?
Sure.
One thought I had too, and I'm totally conscious that we made the agreement to slim down the town plan to a more digestible one, but starting, besides the goals, policies, and actions, starting the narrative with the existing conditions, and it's just like a whole bunch of challenges that we face, that's fine, we do, but it'd be nice to have like an inspirational like intro paragraph of all the wonderful things, like the existing plan has. Now, if we, you know, I realize.
And you asked for that before.
I know.
It's been a little inconsistent.
So, I don't know, something to consider. Focus on the good as well as the challenges.
Do we know why Wetstone Brook is impaired due to E. coli?
Nutrients.
Not exactly, but we suspect, well, first of all, the sewer line runs down to the other Wetstone Brook, and so, like.
Well, I was, I guess what I was getting at is, is this sewer related or is this farm related?
Both. It could be both.
Yeah.
Um, all septic systems, runoff, yeah, dumping.
Yeah, dumping.
I agree, it's nice to have something that says something positive. Even if, again, it's like in a little call-out box, or even if it's like at, there's like a chapter at the end of the plan that's just like, here's a bunch of great stuff about Rattleboro or something, I don't know. It's really hard, it's really easy to get down on everything, but it's really amazing all the stuff that people do here and that people have done. It's very impressive. Deserves recognition.
How positive.
And the potential.
I don't read it as negative, but that's okay.
But speaking of which, in conjunction with this idea there being maps of forests and wetlands, I assume that maps of agricultural lands are going to be in a separate section?
We talked about that in that chapter, I'd have to pull notes. I can't remember what this is.
Yeah, because I'm not looking at an outline of what the whole document is, so.
There's nothing left. Well, we started like six minutes late, so maybe we can go until you have said.
Oh.
But I don't care if you're a lot.
But also, yeah, right.
The question is done.
That was a choice.
If there's going to be a map of everything that is like.
So, we've got a solid minute left here for people's remaining comments.
And whether or not there's any value to that.
Go wild. Yeah.
Just go wild.
Go wild in 60 seconds.
But we feel we've always really accomplished footprints, but.
I'm interested in conversations about utilizing the building more because you're right, I didn't realize that it was underutilized because I, because I don't, you know, this is when I come to it basically, or to see you. So, that's interesting to me, if anything develops on that front in the town.
Yeah, I'm very interested in it.
Yeah.
I'm planning to heat it or cool it, and I want it used as much as possible.
Yeah.
In as nice a way as possible.
I think there were some ideas thrown in the past, but they wanted to utilize it for.
Housing.
Housing and other things, but that was, yeah, ours, yeah.
Well, maybe nobody in town government's a developer, and so it's hard to, without paying money to hire developers to actually get anything done.
Be a historic building.
That was something, this is, this is the size of everything else if we're done with the conversation about the town plan, that you, I think you had mentioned a few times that like we don't really have a developer community here, and, you know, that stands in contrast to some other nearby areas, like say Northampton Amherst area or something. Has anyone, any of like the development corporations or chambers or anything ever done like a tour of Wyndham County for developers? Interesting, it just seems like a natural next step considering, I think what happens in those other areas is that the developers drive around, just like on their day-to-day, and they go, oh, look, there's a good spot for my next project, and if we don't have people doing that here, then maybe we need to create the opportunity for them to take a tour of Wyndham County and see all of the great places we have to.
Check in with BDCC.
Yeah, interesting.
I was just, could you refresh my memory, is BDCC the region development?
All right, let's have the public comment period that's on the agenda. That thought looked, it's over, okay? We've completed all of our business, so I can just adjourn the meeting.
Second as well.
Next up, the person that was.
Too much.
Fun exercise.